Watching at home if there is anyone. I'm Adam Block, Chair of the Needham Planning Board, and we have four members here. I'm going to call the meeting to order and I'll call the attendance. When I say your name, please say that you are present or here. Artie Crocker.
Yeah.
Jean McKnight.
Here.
And Paul Alpert.
Here.
Obviously, Adam Block, Chair is here. Our colleague Natasha Espada will be here, but she's momentarily delayed and we'll recognize her as present when she arrives. This meeting of the planning board is being conducted in a hybrid manner consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. All supporting materials for the meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website, which is needhamma.gov. Hopefully, you can hear me through my hoarse voice and this mask. We have a full agenda tonight. We're going to start out of order and we're going to take up the minutes. And this is for the minutes of February 28th.
And as is my usual custom in reviewing the minutes, I redline those that seem obvious, changes, non-substantive and clear. But when I find things that I just don't know what was meant, I highlight them. So in the column at the bottom of the first page, in the middle, Mr. Block asked if there would be a floating floor on the street. Is that such a thing?
Yes, and he said yes. So that was.
All right. So that is to state the way it is.
At the bottom, we can correct that. Mr. Spencer stated.
Mr. Spencer stated, yeah, I said it would need a ramp. Is that the floor that he's speaking on?
He was just effectively saying that the sidewalk and the parklet that he's building have to be ADA compliant.
So to substitute for the word "it," the parklet?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And then if Mr. Block asked if the parklet flooring would be open slate.
Slats. You were right.
Yeah, okay.
And then on page two, you were correct with that it's yes from the building.
From the building, I think that clarifies, yes. Okay.
And then parklet.
Parklet. Are there more than one or just one?
Just one, so it's singular.
It's a singular. And I thought it was only one, yeah. And so we're fine with page three.
Page five is the next one.
And page five. Yeah. Mr. Block encouraged someone to talk to county council.
Right.
And what was written is the town.
The town staff.
Okay, the town staff.
Because the Attorney General, when they approved it, they said that, you know, the implementation of this involves multiple statutes and to be working with town council to ensure compliance with the multiple statutes, including our own pie law. So that's all that was.
All right. So with changes that are marked and the change.
Did we miss that?
It's not a minor one.
Oh, yes, there actually is, thank you. Mr. Block noted, the project is adding approximately 150 units. I think that. And the redlining after that is my wording, just for explanation.
For context.
CPA Funding Application says they're proposing to add between 32 to 56 new units. So adding approximately 150 units is not correct.
No, they were going to add. They wanted to go from 156 to 250. So that delta is about 100 units.
But that's not 150 units. It says adding approximately 150 units.
So it's adding approximately 100.
All right. All right. And you're sure of that because I'm familiar with the CPA Funding Application, which said it was proposing to add between 32 and 56 units to the existing 152. But I'll just ignore that for the moment.
You know what? Better we not, because if it's relating to that application, scratch the adding approximately, because what you're saying is that they're adding 32 to 56. And now, but they're looking to do more than that now. Right, like in our meeting.
That's not why we're at the meeting.
Right.
And so these are minutes of the meeting.
Exactly.
So should I say, Mr. Block noted, the project is adding approximately 100 units? What I should say?
I don't think so, because I think of like what Paul was saying. If on February 28th, they were saying they're only going to add 30 something units. Coincidentally, council for the housing authority is here tonight. So we could ask Bob for clarity. In our minutes.
This has to do with Linden Chambers. And how many units are to be added?
As of today, we know it's up close to 100.
Close to 100, not nice there. I think he said there were 152 now.
I don't know, he said 150, yeah.
Yeah, the existing 152, that's right.
Right. And the plans haven't really been finalized yet, but I think the ballpark is around 240, 250.
Yeah. But as of the date, not today, of February 28th, so several months ago, were they intending to add?
This was an introductory meeting.
Yes.
Leave it alone. This point really isn't that important, that we get it, you know, really buttoned down for the minutes. What I'm getting is that none of us really remember what Reg said was the number in February, on February 28th, was going to be the number of added units.
Those numbers are true to different conversations, though.
Yeah.
And so I think approximately may be good enough.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll leave it as it is, approximately 150 units. And the sentence I added was just for explanation, so we delete that.
Okay. But I think you did mention that at the meeting. I seem to remember your mentioning.
The CPC.
The CPC meeting.
CPC Funding Application. I could say Jean noted that, or Ms. McKnight.
Ms. McKnight, yes.
McKnight noted that. The, so then that would, instead of deleting what I had in redline, it would be introduced by Ms. McKnight noting that.
Right.
Okay. So with the redlining noted and with.
Did you get the highlight that you had in the correspondence?
Again?
You highlighted the word "town"?
Yes.
You did, okay.
It should have been town staff. So with the highlighting shown, I mean, excuse me, the redlining shown and with the highlighted words clarified and changed appropriately, I move that we accept the minutes of February 28th, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion by Jean, a second by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing now, come to the vote. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker. Jean McKnight.
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. We've unanimously decided of those present to approve the minutes of February 28th. Thank you very much. Alex, do you have anything to report in?
No, but you guys could do Board of Appeals.
So that's, so Board of Appeals. Thank you very much for that. So I've.
Here's Natasha.
And here's Natasha. We'll come to Board of Appeals at our natural time. And we know for the record that Natasha is present. And we don't have to do a roll call vote either, which is great. So the first item on our agenda is a reorganization of the board. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I will make a motion that, I will make a motion. I move to nominate Natasha Espada as Vice Chair of the Planning Board and Adam Block as Chair of the Planning Board to serve for this coming year.
The second, yeah, motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion?
Well, and obviously, you know, the concern I have. I mean, this, I mean, there's the board, the board, I mean, this is the People's Board. It's the Board of the Town of Needham. So it's very important that we see it that way, that everything that we do and there's everything that's phrased that way. It's not our board, it's not my board, it's the People's Board. And again, everything that we bring to the board, everything that's discussed that we have is to that purpose, to that ends. And how we phrase things is very important. So I mean, I've had, you know, I have a concern about that. The board is, it's a democratic process. Everyone has an equal vote and everyone has an equal say.
How does that relate to the motion out of us?
Would you like me to? So you asked, okay, because that has not been, if you, yeah, so you asked me specifically, is that has not been what's been happening? When there is discussion going on, if there is something that, to be blunt, if there's something that is agreed upon or not agreed upon, more specifically, then there's the Chair is interceding after, after points that are not agreed upon. And that's not what's supposed to be happening in the boards. I've been on a lot of boards in town and that's not what happens. We all have an equal say in what's going on. And if we double up on what I'm, for example, if I double up on what I'm saying, then that's not an equal say. If I'm the Chair of a board, I never intercede my agenda on anything going on. It's, I always listen to what's going on and I respect what's being said by everyone on the board. And then we take a vote based on that, not take a vote based on saying such as, I will not stand in the way of it, which has been said. You know, I will, you know, I will bring my package. It's my board, things like that. We don't say things like that. And so it's important that we, that.
At the board, you mean?
Yes, yes, at the, yes, at the Planning Board meetings, that's exactly. You've asked the question, so I'm going to answer the question.
Mr. Crocker, is something wrong with my motion? Did I word it improperly?
No, your motion is fine. No, your motion is fine, but Adam. He's speaking against. No, no, Adam, no. Adam is asking if there was any discussion, so I'm bringing up the discussion. Then, then, Adam, you asked if there was reason why I'm saying this. And I'm saying, yeah, so that's the reason why I'm saying this. We have to, we have to respect everyone on the board. Has to be respecting what we're saying. And we're not, we're not supposed to, we're not supposed to speak in between everyone. And the Chair, the Vice Chair is not supposed to speak, in this case, is not supposed to speak after someone that they disagree with. Is that shows a disrespect for the democratic process, in my opinion. And so we are supposed to uphold the purpose of our board for the public, for the public's good.
We all agree on that.
Well, but that, but that isn't what's been happening, though.
Would you like to make another motion?
No, I would, there's nothing I can, there's nothing that will change anything right now. What I'm saying is, things have to be done differently in how we, in how we run the meetings and how we talk.
I certainly welcome an opportunity already to get together with you after the meeting.
Well, yeah, but you asked me, I'm saying during the meeting, it has to be done differently.
I look forward to, I look forward to getting a little more clarity with you, getting together another time to talk to that through. Appreciate that. Do you have anything else on the motion?
No, that's it.
Okay, good. Does anyone else have any other comment or discussion? Then shall we take a vote? All in favor of the new leadership, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
So we have, for the record, a vote of four to one for the leadership of the Planning Board, which consists of Natasha as Vice Chair and myself, again, as Chair for another term. Artie's objection is noted. And I look forward to resolving the objection as we go forward.
And I do as well.
Very good. Turning now to our next item is the, a public hearing for an amendment to Special Permit Number 2017-01 with Sierra Naturals doing business as, Sierra Naturals doing business as Air as the petitioner to remove the appointment-only condition of their operation. We'd like to bring up to our table Attorney Robert Smart, Alicia DeAngelis, and John Fernandez, John Packnett, Derek Roach, and Richard Parsons.
Richard will be appearing by Zoom.
Richard is appearing by Zoom. Are you able to bring Richard over? Thank you very much. Thanks for noting that. While you guys are setting up, can I have a motion to waive the reading of the notice of hearing?
So moved.
We have a motion by Paul. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Jean. Any discussion? Hearing now, I'll come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by nay. We unanimously decided we've waived the reading of the notice of the hearing. Again, with us today is the crew from Air. Bob, I'll turn this over to you.
All right, fine.
If you want to lead us through, please.
I represent Sierra Naturals. Now, we're proposing an amendment to the special permit, which was granted by the Planning Board for the operation of 27 to, 39? 29 to 37 Franklin Street. That special permit was amended in October of 2022 and we're seeking a further amendment to that decision. In, in the fall of 2022, the board granted relief for four items permanently and two on a temporary basis and gave Sierra the ability to come back and seek to make that temporary relief permanent. Before I go further, let me just introduce the team. John Fernandez, Government Relations Attorney. Dwan Packnett, Vice President of Governmental Relations. Alicia DeAngelis is the Compliance Manager. And Richard Powers, appearing remotely, is the Operations Manager for Sierra in Needham. And Derek Roach is here from Vaness and Associates. He's a traffic engineer. So with regard to the four amendments to the original special permit that were made permanent, we don't want to touch those, we're happy. One of the two amendments that was granted temporarily having to do with an increase in the number of sales positions, Sierra's founder doesn't need it, so we're happy to let that lapse. We are seeking to make the appointment only, the elimination of the appointment-only requirement permanent. Sierra, since the decision became final, Sierra's been operating the facility without the appointment requirement. It hasn't caused problems. It's, it's, it's helped, there has been an increase in the number of, the number of patients, but it's a fairly modest increase. And the numbers are still far lower than they were in December of 2000, which was the high point. There, there hasn't been a problem with lines out the door. There's been plenty of on-site parking. And Sierra, Sierra has addressed the issues, I think, that were raised by some of the neighbors. You know, the area is clean, is basically swept every day, the parking area. There is surveillance outside to make sure that people are not, you know, smoking marijuana or any other products illicitly outside the building. It's all, it's all worked quite well. The spaces next door, which are leased from Dan Roma, have been available as they're supposed to be available. And if you, if you, if you look at the, and I guess, I guess the other thing is that, you know, both the, the staff and patients have been, have been told, you know, no use outside the premises. And I don't believe that that's happened. We haven't heard any reports that it has. The comments that you got from all of the various other town boards were basically no comment, so nobody's concerned about granting the relief that's been requested. What else, did I miss anything? And we actually, the Sierra personality actually reached out to each, each person that came, each neighbor that came and spoke with most of them. There were, there were face-to-face meetings with Dan Sochi, with John Ahigian. James, his brother, is actually the president, I believe, of Udo Electronics, but we weren't able to reach him. His brother, who also works in the business, was there and basically said, you know, we don't have any problems. We met with Brian Mushnick. He expressed no concerns and we haven't been able to get ahold of John Ahigian. We tried several different ways to try to reach him. Anyway, so we're asking that the elimination of the appointment-only requirement be made permanent. And let me turn it over to Derek.
Yeah, sure. Hi, Derek Roach, Vaness and Associates. I'm the traffic consultant. I'm a senior transportation engineer at the company and a professional engineer in the state of Massachusetts. So we conducted a, some parking counts and a review of transaction data of the company in March 30th, 2023, as well as the full month of March. We looked at the full month of March to get an average daily transaction. It was about 82 transactions a day. Luckily, the day that we counted, March 30th, 2023, had 81 transactions. So it pretty much was an average day. Way we equated the transactions to trips is one transaction equals one entering trip, one exiting trip. So we double the number of transactions, you get 162 trips daily. We also looked at the peak hours, the midday peak hour and the evening peak hour. In the evening, or sorry, the midday peak hour, we had 10 transactions, equates to 20 trips, which was about 44% less than the estimate from the June 2022 memo, a report. In the evening period, we had nine transactions, 18 trips, was about 65% less than the 2022 estimate. Like I said, we also did the parking study. There's 18 sites, spaces on site. There's 18 spaces off-site that are available for our use. There's six other spaces that are assigned to some other company. Looking at that during the midday peak out, peak time, peak period, there was 11 spaces available at the worst. Sorry, there was 11 spaces on-site available at the worst and there was five spaces off-site. In the evening time period, there was 13 available spaces on-site and 12 spaces off-site. So there seemed to be ample parking for the customers that are going there. So based on the trip generation being lower than before, the parking seeming to have ample space for the customers that they're getting, we concluded that there's no further need for monitoring at this point and that we support the decision to grant the relief. Or the request, the request to grant the relief.
That's all we have. I just want, just one clarification. Derek had mentioned the 18 off-site spaces. Obviously, those are available to everybody, not.
Correct, not just us, that is true.
Not just Sierra. We don't have anything further. We're here to answer questions, if there are any.
I'll note for the record, I'll go through what we've received from the town boards and then we'll open up for board comment and public comment. We received a letter from Attorney Smart dated April 13th for the petitioner that also included an operations description from the site manager in addition to the April 11 traffic, updated traffic monitoring study that Derek just referenced from Vaness. How does that, am I pronouncing it correctly?
Vaness.
Vaness. Concluding that the site is generating less traffic than expected during peak periods and less demand for parking than expected and that no further traffic or parking studies or monitoring are required going forward. We have an email dated April 28th from Police Chief Schlittler saying that the police are fine with this request provided that the petitioner continues to be responsive to any parking issues that arise. So for instance, although you were not able to get ahold of John, Mr. Negosian, who I think had raised a number of comments and questions at a previous hearing for your last special permit request. And I don't know, I can't recall offhand of that specifically, if any of his comments specifically related to parking or not, but, you know, we want to make sure that the team is immediately responsive. And I would probably look to phrase it that way in our decision. You know, that, that management on the first instance and any instance of any question relating to parking issues or any other behavioral issues that may arise on-site or, you know, on the property or the exterior, that they're immediately responsive.
I think it's probably best if there are any questions or issues that arise that they go first, probably to Richard Parsons, would you say? Because he's, he's the one that's on-site. He's the operations manager on-site.
So there should probably be somewhere on-site, something posted, you know, any questions about our behavior and conduct, parking or otherwise. You know, you know, please ask for Richard Parsons.
Sure.
Perhaps what we can do is, you know, phrase it to position the store manager and obligate ourselves to have a current name for you to reference.
Right. And that should be published somewhere on-site.
Yeah.
Because now you don't need an appointment to go in so anyone can go into the premises and say, I've got, someone's parking in my spot or that kind of thing. So Alex, you have, that's great.
Mr. Chair, the only thing that came up with Mr. Negosian, I believe, I believe he was referencing trash. I don't know to what to be, was actually relegated to this facility itself. But that's the only thing I actually remember him talking about.
I remember you spoken a number of items, but I can't specifically recall what they were offhand. But thanks for mentioning that. So, you know, I've attended the premises on several occasions from the last hearing to now, not going into the property, but looking around the property. And I did know, I observed personally that it was particularly well-maintained and clean. We have an email dated, you know, to your observation, Artie, an email dated May 10 from the Assistant Public Health Director, Tara Gurge, stating that the Health Department has no comment. An email dated May 10 from the Building Commissioner, Dave Roach, saying that he has no issue with the application or the amendment. And also a letter dated May 10 from our town engineer saying that he has no comment or no objection. Do my colleagues have any other comment? Paul Alpert, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I'm, I'm fine with the application with the caveat of if somebody from the audience is going to speak against it, I want to hear what they have to say. But it appears, it appears that everything seems to be, seems to be copacetic. I believe that it is part of our decision that is already there that, that the petitioner has agreed to continue to monitor the parking situation, continue to monitor the trash situation, continue to monitor the, the smoking outside of the building. And so, so that if there are complaints, that they're in violation of that and they're in violation of our permit. And people can come back to us and, or, or to the Building Commissioner and of course, in addition to the police. So, you know, I would, I would think that the police will let us know if they get complaints and we can deal with it. We can, you know, we can ask them to come in and explain, just like we do, as Bob knows, after all these years, you know, that's, that's how we handle it. So, so I'm, I'm fine.
Jean, do you want to comment, questions?
Yes, I want to make note of what's referenced in the letter of the, from Mr. Parsons of Sierra Naturals and it's also mentioned in Mr. Smart's letter, but wasn't mentioned orally here. And that is at the meeting with Dan Sochi of Sochi Auto Service and that he did have some complaints. Yeah. I don't recall you mentioning that, but just wanted to make sure it's part of the record. But those complaints would be of the type that, as the, the conditions of the permit that were mentioned would be addressing. And then I have a process question. And then I have a process question. I see Exhibit A and what is being sought is to amend the decision dated October 18th, 2022, in two respects. But would there be an actual document that we would sign that would then get recorded? And we don't have that in front of us today, do we? So is it appropriate to make, and not that I would do so right now, but just asking the process, is it appropriate to, to move, to make the amendment at this meeting? Or should we wait until we have the document in front of us?
We typically wait until in front of us.
The decision will be a decision amending the previous
That's what we normally do.
Decision.
Yeah, so this is what they're seeking. We would close the hearing.
Right.
But we would make the decision when we have it in front of us. That was my process question.
Bob, one of the things that you mentioned, which I don't recall reading, is that your early, an earlier request, which was granted, was for an increased number of sales stations.
Yes.
And then you've said tonight that that's no longer necessary.
Correct.
Do you want to, are you, are you formally requesting to remove those additional sales stations? Or do you want to keep it as is?
What happened was that we asked for, for an amendment last time around, back in October, to increase the number of permitted sale stations, I believe by, by one. And
Five to seven.
Yeah, I'm sorry, thank you. Five, five, five to seven. And, you know, Sarah's experience, you know, since the decision became final has been that there's not enough business to warrant those, those additional spaces. And so that relief, which was granted on a temporary basis, I think will expire in, in June because it was only granted on a temporary basis.
And I think that our decision, when we get it, should make it clear that there'll be five stations.
I agree. I think that would be helpful clarity for everyone.
Is there any reason just to leave it at seven? Is there any benefit to us, the board, the town or the Sierra Naturals to leave it at seven, even though you're not using seven right now?
Well, Sarah, people.
You know, I would say this, it was discussed internally in exactly that way to that question. And the answer was, we don't foresee an opportunity in the future to expand to the seven stations. If the board was inclined to say, you know, we'll leave it in place, that's fine. What I would say is that to your point of it being a test run during the eight months, we didn't test run it. So, you know, I, I, so I'm, I'm sort of speaking against the idea, but I, I do so only because as a, as a, as a team, the question was, I, look, as an attorney, I've done a lot of land use planning. I would never say give something up that you got because it's going to take you 90 days to get it back again.
As you said, we didn't actually test it.
But, but it was offered to you as a test run and we didn't test run it.
Artie, my inclination, everything in front of us is if we're going to grant what the petitioner's request, we grant what the petitioner's request. And if they don't ask, they don't get. They're not asking for the two extra stations, so I'm
Well, now we, now we, now we know a little bit more why.
I'm not going to give it to them if they're not asking.
Well, and I would also suggest to you that as a matter of normal process, I've never asked for somebody to expand a, a request because the, but us haven't had the opportunity to, to take note of that. And so you can always diminish what somebody asks for, but you usually don't expand upon what somebody's asked for.
And basically, what's happened is, you know, you know, when, when Sarah had the most patients actually coming, you know, coming through the door, you know, there were only a fairly limited number of medical marijuana facilities in the state that were licensed and operating.
Right.
There's, there's, there's a very, very large number and there's the competition of the recreational.
So I was going to ask, since it was just brought up, I was going to ask that question, which really has nothing to do with what's in front of us, but I'm curious as to whether the fact that there's not, that there's now recreational marijuana, has that cut into the medical marijuana industry? Sounds like
To an extent.
To an extent.
To an extent, I would say yes.
But people who have medical conditions still would rather get a prescription.
If I may, we have a really long agenda. I want to stick to issues related specifically to the application. Otherwise, we're not going to be able to get out of here until, until late. Yeah.
I have a quick question.
Yes, Natasha, please.
So I'm just looking at here, your sales have increased, but then the, the number of patients has decreased by half in person, right? Since 2020, December 2020, because you had 5,335 patients. And now you have February or March, you had 2,543. So although the sales have increased, is it because you're doing things online or you're doing things? Why, why have the patients decreased but your sales increased? You know, what has caused? I guess just more people buying more things, but less people? Or I'm just trying to figure out if, if there's, if you're, if you, the patients are going to start increasing again? Or if it's just that you have a different venue of circulating the, the goods that you're selling?
I would say the peak numbers in 2020 in December were peak COVID. Marijuana, of course, was an essential business at that time. Medical patient numbers by county at least were higher than we're seeing. And now we're seeing a bit of a decline with more adult use retailers just in the greater Boston area. So while the sales are fairly consistent, we have seen a drop in patients again because it's not COVID. And generally, there's more movement away from medical sales.
The only reason I ask because of parking, right? So if you had 5,335 and now you have 2,543, is that going to continue to uptick? But it sounds like it's, it's pretty stable, even though you don't have
We're not anticipating, but in fact, there was a discussion today that suggested the medical market's probably peaking at this point. We're not anticipating increased sales.
Yeah, just the, the, the numbers that, that we provided, you know, since the decision became final from October of 2022, there were 1,918 visits in October, 2582 in November, 2964 December, 3044 in January, 3056 in February, and then a drop between February and March to 2543. So, yeah, I don't know.
I was just trying to figure out if sales have increased, but your amount of patients is half. I'm just trying to figure out, is it because you're doing something, you know, you're doing it in a different way that won't increase the amount of patients coming in and need more parking? That's where I'm coming from.
Alteratively, the medical program does allow for home delivery, so that might also be
I figured that that was part of it, is that people are not coming in person as much and probably.
And you're storing trucks on site, I think to label, to enable distribution. All right, do you have anything else?
No, I'm fine with it. I just wanted to make sure that, that, that it wasn't going to start ticking up again, you know, for, whatever.
Anything else? Parking problem, the police or we will hear about it, basically.
And then, Artie, do you have any comments or questions?
No, no, I'm good. Thank you.
So at this point, I'd like to open it up to anyone in the public in the room. Would like to see, discuss this. I don't see any hands open or up in the room. I'll go to Zoom. I don't see anyone at home with their hands up. We'll give it one more minute. And then, then we'll move on with probably a motion to close the hearing. Let's give it a minute.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I think we've had enough time. I'm, I'm moving to close the hearing.
We have a motion by Paul to close the hearing. We have a second by Artie, any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. By nay. All opposed by nay. For your opposition, we unanimously decided to close the hearing. And then we will take up a motion to grant the requested relief and the amendment, when the amendment's available to us. Very good.
Chairman, sometimes I believe the board's practice has been to, to, to vote, at least to direct the planning staff to prepare a favorable decision and to indicate what conditions ought to be in it. And then, and then, and then at the next meeting, actually vote the, vote, vote the actual, or actually, I guess, vote the actual, well, you vote the relief, but, but then you, you actually sign the decision at the, at the next meeting.
I think there's only one that we discussed, it's not already in your letters. So I would, I would think that the staff has what they need.
Yeah, Alex, the only, the only condition are the two that you've identified. And then the third is, as Paul had suggested, which we haven't, which we haven't voted on the relief, which we would include at this stage when we do vote the relief, is, you know, limiting the number of sales stations to five.
Yeah, clarifying.
To clarify that the most number, exactly.
So you, that it sounds like you typically don't take a vote saying
So you typically don't take a vote saying we, we
And our staff.
Our, our, our staff puts it in front of us with a chapter in reverse of the bylaws.
You're speaking specifically about taking a vote to direct the staff to write, to prepare a decision.
To prepare a favorable decision, because if I'm staff, am I preparing two decisions, a favorable?
Right, yeah. I hear, I have heard those words in this room before.
Yes, Alex, are you clear on a favorable decision? So I don't know that we need a vote for that. I think we're
Yeah, I don't think we need a vote.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This will be taken up at the next meeting?
June 6th.
June 6th?
I think it's our next meeting.
That's right.
Yeah. Okay, okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is a major project site plan special permit number 2003-01 with a request by petitioner, thank you very much folks.
Thank you all.
With a request by petitioner Tristan Rovetto of Brighton to occupy the premises at 1502 Highland Avenue as a professional fitness services establishment. With us tonight for the petitioner is the entrepreneur Tristan Rovetto. May I have a motion to waive the reading of the notice of hearing? The motion by Artie is seconded by Natasha. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed by nay. We've unanimously decided to waive the reading of the notice of hearing. Why don't we go ahead and start with you, sir?
Yes, hello, my name is Tristan Rovetto. I am looking, like you said, to occupy the space of 1502 Highland Avenue as a personal fitness service establishment is allowed by right in the center business, business district, given you have enough parking spaces on site, which that location does not. So I am applying pursuant to section 3.2.2 to waive the strict adherence to the parking requirement in order to, you know, get my occupancy and be allowed by right to operate.
Excellent.
Yes.
I note for the record that we've received a letter from the petitioner providing an analysis of the bylaw in relation to the proposed use, which is an effect, which is a very well done analysis.
Thank you.
We've, I have an email dated May 8th from the Building Commissioner Dave Roach saying he has no issues with the proposed use of the space and acknowledges that the building code requires the property owner to make arrangements for someone with a disability to have access to a bathroom.
Okay.
And he says that's a matter of the state building code.
Yes, exactly.
Not something we would put in the decision, but you have, should be aware of it.
Okay.
What I recommend is to talk about it with Dave specifically.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not entirely sure how that would be done. You don't have much time.
No.
Yeah.
But he's a good guy, he's accessible.
Yeah.
And you can do that at any time. You don't have to wait for this decision.
Okay.
But it would be a good idea because we want to, I specifically called that out because I want you to be aware of it.
Right.
Because he's going to make it a condition of your occupancy because it's part of the building permit process.
Right.
Okay?
So if that does not happen, the occupancy cannot happen.
I don't think so. It sounds like you need to have some kind of a bathroom for ADA compliance. Whatever satisfies him, it's not for us.
Okay.
Talk, he'll tell you how to, what'll satisfy him and then you're good in shape.
If I may, occasionally such situations have worked out with another store owner or a restaurant owner in the block. If, if I have such a person, may I ask that, may, may that person be allowed to use your bathroom? Such as CVS, a restaurant that's on the block, I think.
Okay, that, thank you, yes. That's very valuable information.
And you can also ask him how else that could be accommodated, but he'll tell you how to satisfy, you can satisfy him. We have a letter dated May 10th from our town engineer saying that he has no comment or objection on the application. We have an email dated May 10th from Tara Gurge saying that the Department of Health has no additional comment. When she says additional comment, I presume that refers to perhaps other comments. Have you spoken to the Department of Health at all?
No.
You have not spoken to the Department of Health, okay. So Tara Gurge has no, no additional comments, although we've no other comments from her before. We have an email dated May 8th from Chief Schlittler saying that the police is fine with the proposed use. We don't have anything from the fire department, Alex?
We don't.
There's no one here in the public, in the room that would like to speak? I don't see any hands up, but in the meantime, while we look to see if there's anyone at home that would like to speak to this, I'll open it up to the board. Artie, do you have any comments?
Just that I think it's great to be in there, as, as Gene is saying, that just comply with what the building, building commissioner was looking for. And I think it's a perfect, perfect opportunity to bring something like, in the sense, straight in the center of town. There are other facilities, you know, yoga facilities similar to that kind of occurring in the center of town.
Right.
So I think it's, it's great that you're doing something in there. Which, I know it's 1502, exactly which storefront is there now?
It's the one, if you're facing the building, all the way to the right.
All the way, is this clothing, clothing store now?
Yes, it's right next to Black Sheep Knitting.
Yeah, okay.
And then the bank is on the other side, exactly. Yes, separate buildings.
It's where the Well, yeah, but there was more recently, I think it was like the COVID testing place that was a bit of a
That was interesting.
But that's the space where he is. And I think before that, it was a clothing store.
Yeah, no, it's great.
Thank you.
Natasha, do you have any comments?
No.
Okay. Paul, do you have any comments? Sorry, I didn't mean to skip over. Gene, do you have any comments?
Yes, I do. I note that this premises has two display windows.
Yes.
And something that the planning board has been concerned about over the years with establishments going in our town center that are more service oriented rather than sales oriented is what it looks like from the street.
Yes.
And we've, we've looked for things, for example, a dentist went in on Great Plain Avenue across from Greensfield, right on that corner. And he displays in his window antique dental equipment, dental chairs. Well, it's something at least, you know? And what I'd like to know, and I, I would like to suggest, I know we have a decision already here, but I am suggesting to section 3.8, which is presently worded, the petitioner recognizes the desire of the board to assure a viable active retail storefront presence on the main periphresis of the town and shall work in its configuration of its operation to ensure that goal is met. I'd like to insert a phrase in there. So it says, and so it would say, and shall work in its configuration of its operation and display within its two window space areas to assure that goal is met. And I don't know what exactly to suggest. Perhaps an art organization would like to display some art. Perhaps the, it's the knitting store next door would like to work something out. But it says, so the people walking down the street, because otherwise what do you propose? Just blinds to give people privacy in the workout room?
If I may, this is something that I have given thought to. My hometown, where I moved from very recently, is a small town. And one of the things I really love about Needham is the small town feel despite the size of the city itself. So what I would like to do with the space is use it as an opportunity, those window spaces to both advertise what I do, but also kind of provide the feeling for the nature and purpose of the company itself, which is health and fitness and also soccer related. So I'm a professional coach with the Newland Revolution and I coach some local steel, united club teams out of Needham as well. So I have ideas for different designs and displays to put up in the window that I'd actually want to change season to season that will display information about health and fitness and stuff related to my ties with the Newland Revolution. that will display information about health and fitness and stuff related to my ties with the Newland Revolution and create that feeling of community and partnership that my business represents as my partnership with the Town of Needham Soccer Club and the Revolution and things like that. But I also think it's a great idea to give the opportunity to other local businesses.
That, that sounds very clear, I'm not asking for anything more than that. May I show you the words I added? They're in pencil to make sure that you're satisfied with those words.
Yes, I believe I am.
Good, thank you.
So. I hope, yes, go ahead.
Just related to that also, if there's any signage that is going.
They'll go through the design review board.
Yeah, that's a different process, I believe, right, yeah.
Okay.
I do have one question about that, I'm not sure if you guys can answer it. I know the sign on the front of the building needs to be approved and permitted and everything. Window decals and stuff on the inside of the windows, does that need any sort of approval? Check the design review board, okay.
He's the sign enforcer, so check with him.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
So. I do some work in commercial real estate and represent sometimes a landlord or a tenant. And one of the things that comes up when we're dealing with a tenant use such as a gym is, you know, volume control and sound attenuation. I think that's the right word, Artie, you're the engineer. Then the other thing that comes up is sometimes the equipment. There can be quite a bit of banging around, that's not a technical term. On one side you have an alleyway.
Yep.
But you also have tenants above you.
Yes.
And you have a tenant on one other side of you. So I don't know if you've, if this was part of your lease?
There were no comments made in the lease strictly about noise pollution and the different causes of noise. However, there are different things that I can do to minimize the impact of that. So as a private personal trainer, there isn't quite as much banging around, we're not throwing around heavy weights. I'm often working with people who aren't in good shape and we're doing relatively simple exercises. When it comes to soccer training, that's a little different. Over the summer, I will likely be taking people to public parks or working at their own houses and things like that before sessions that would be in the studio. The one wall that is adjacent to the alleyway would be the only wall that soccer balls would be allowed to be kicked against. Not with the wall that I share with Black Sheep, because I don't want to disturb their, their knitting nights, they're often there late at night. The floor of, I'm, we're planning to lay down a roll of turf on top of the existing carpet. It's just a big plastic rug, but you can also get layers of padding to go underneath that if it were a problem to further reduce noise pollution. And one of the last kind of ditch attempts would be to put up noise insulating foam around the top of the ceiling to further isolate any sound issues or complaints. But I'm, you know, I would like to communicate directly with the local tenants to make sure that that's within an acceptable range.
If the board agrees, I would probably want to have some kind of a condition in the decision that in the event another tenant in the building or the landlord complains of either noise or another form of a nuisance from the use of any kind of equipment, that he'll agree to be immediately responsive and to take all measures necessary to eliminate that form of nuisance, whether it's noise or another form. Does that make sense?
Totally, 100% acceptable.
Do you, are you okay with that, Paul? That concept?
I'm okay with it. I'm just thinking as a lawyer that these are provisions that are usually in the lease.
That's why I asked about it, exactly.
You know, if. You mentioned, well, there are tenants above, you mentioned Black Sheep, is that in the same building? So is that the same landlord?
Yes.
So these are tenants of the same landlord and if they've got a problem, they're going to complain to them. I would think that they would complain to the landlord before they would complain to us.
For sure, for sure.
You know, and then he'd be in violation of the lease, which is scarier than dealing with us.
Yeah.
But otherwise also, so are you saying that it's, it's too far?
I don't think it's necessary, because I think that it's, it should be covered by his lease, but we don't have a lease in front of us, so we don't know that, but most leases say, you know, you won't.
He did say that it's not in the lease.
Okay, if you want to have the condition, he's agreed to having the condition, so.
So you both have been on the board longer than the rest of us? I don't want to begin a practice that's unreasonable for a proprietor, but we still always typically have conditions that protect the public in other ways. So it wasn't, so if that's a reasonable thing, I'd be prepared to do it, but if it's unreasonable.
So Mr. Chair, if these were separate landlords, that would probably make a lot, a lot more sense. But if it's the same landlord, is it, is it, is it still viable there since it's the same landlord?
So we don't, we don't, we're not privy to the lease. We don't know what the arrangement is with the landlord.
Jean, what do you, what do you think? You think this is a reasonable condition to have in a, in a planning board decision?
Of course, any condition, and then if there are complaints, then our building commissioner gets involved in resolving it.
Yeah.
And I'm just not certain that it's something that we necessarily need to have our building inspector involved in resolving, that's the only concern I have. The applicant is okay with it.
It's a better, it's a better use of our town employees times if it's the landlord who has to deal well with those kinds of complaints.
That's, that's my only concern. And, but, but you were narrowing this condition in, in your sense, as you started out, you said, for athletic type establishments, workout establishments, you're concerned about noise. You're not saying every single thing we do in this town has.
It's just certain.
Such a condition.
Like if there's, when you go to a dentist office, there's not much vibration, there's a little bit of noise from the drill, but that's the most. So you don't typically have those kinds of things in a public, in a, in a development agreement with the town or with a special permit. But when you're dealing with like a restaurant, we deal with pest control and so on, which comes up through the Department of Health and those conditions. And when we're dealing with, you know, with other uses that are active uses, we do sometimes propose conditions that protect other, you know, occupants.
For example, with Wingate, we're very concerned about the generator and how much noise they might generate and that they have to watch that and so forth. So it's not heard of that we consider such things, you know, and so.
If it weren't for the parking, this is a use that's allowed as of right, so it wouldn't even be in front of us for us to impose that condition.
On that basis, I'm glad you brought that up, thanks for thinking of that, you're absolutely right. I'm gonna, I'm glad we discussed this, but I'm going to withdraw. I would like to flag it for something when we have, do a training though, Alex, with town council on, you know, our decisions and things we can and cannot do, that when these kinds of things are reasonable or not. If you could add that to that list, that would be helpful.
On my colleagues, like, like what I proposed, that the display window be.
I'm fine, I'm fine with that. Is everyone else okay with Jean's comment about the technical window? So.
May I see what you drafted, Jean?
While Paul's looking that over, I know we have nothing from the public, so when Paul's satisfied, we'll take a motion to close the hearing. And then I.
I move to close the hearing.
I have a motion to close the hearing, do I have a second? I have a second, any discussion, hearing done?
No, I didn't.
Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We are unanimously decided to close the hearing. Now, as to the motion to grant the relief, would someone like to make a motion to grant the relief?
Okay, let me find it.
Page four, this is usually our motion maker.
Okay. So I move that we grant a special permit under section 3.2.2 of the bylaw for a personal fitness service establishment where all required parking is not located on site in the center business district. And I further move that we grant a special permit under section 3.2.2 of the bylaw for more than one non-residential use on a lot where such uses are not detrimental to each other and are in compliance with all other requirements of the bylaw. And I move that we grant a special permit under section 5.1.1.6 of the bylaw to waive strict adherence with the off-street parking requirements of section 5.1.2, required parking, and section 5.1.3, parking plan and design requirements subject to and with the benefit of the plan modifications, conditions, and limitations set forth in our decision.
I second that motion.
We have a motion by Paul and seconded by Jean, any discussion? Hearing now will come to the vote, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by nay. We unanimously decided to grant the relief. Aye. Shall I have a motion to approve the decision as contained in our packets?
I've got some typos, if I may. On page two, section 1.6, at the end of the second line, first, first word of a sentence, no, you need to lowercase the, the O, in no. You got that? And then we've got some numbering mistakes. At the bottom of page three, the last, last is 1.15. And then.
Oh, where is that, in section 1.10?
It goes 1.14 and then 1.1.10 again, so this should be 1.15. And then on page six, we have a misnumbering at the top of the page, 3.13 and then 3, 3.17 against 3.14 and 3.18 against 3.15. And then on the bottom of that page, the last one, 4.5, the second 4.5 becomes 4.6. What would we do without you, Paul? Well, I'm going to.
Trying to get this in this packet.
I know, I know, and, and you know.
Otherwise, I had to touch you sometime, I seem to compliment you, Alex, on the package you put together with so many decisions and everything.
Despite a few numbered yours. And with the change to section 3.8.
Which you, which you have now.
I have it.
Great, so can I have a motion to approve the decision as contained in our packet and further revise tonight?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I'm going to call up my Jean. Any discussion? Hearing now will come to the vote, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's the whole board unanimously, I heard, we have. Congratulations. Wish you the best of luck with your start, don't forget to be in touch with the building commissioner to talk about the ADA bathroom and how you can satisfy him for that.
Yes.
Does he know the procedure about getting it and then recording it?
I'll talk to you about next steps.
Cool, okay.
On Thursday, so I'll talk to you then.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
Awesome.
Thanks very much, have a good evening, best of luck.
Good luck with it.
Business here.
Very good. Next up is our public hearing on our agenda. Next up on our agenda is a public hearing for major project site plan special permit number 2023-02 with Shalit Needham Inc., I love the name, doing business as Sweet Boba as petitioner to renovate 644 square feet of the first floor retail space at 1032 Great Plain Ave. Retail bakery and an Eden counter with six seats. Before we go ahead just procedurally, can I have a motion to waive the reading of the notice of hearing? So, can I have a second?
Second.
So a motion by Artie, seconded by Paul, discussion, hearing now will come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, that's the whole board, there is no opposition unanimously decided. With us today is Kakada Lee, is that right?
My name is Kakada Lee.
Would you like to go ahead and talk to us about your plan?
My name is Kakada Lee, owner of Sweet Boba. I was seeking a permit to get some seating for our client, so they can sit down and enjoy the drink.
Good. I note for the record, we've received the following items. A letter dated February 6 from the petitioner outlining the intended business operation with the proposed change. We have architectural drawings dated January 12. We've also received a letter dated May 10 from Tom Ryder, our town engineer, with no objection to the plan and reminding the petitioner, which is you, that you'll need to maintain the grease trap in accordance with the sewer division, which is through the Department of Public Works, and also with the Health Department, okay? An email dated May 10 from the Health Department, Tara Gurge, who's the Assistant Public Health Director, noting that you'll need to get a health, a permit plan review for a food, a food permit plan with the Department of Health, are you familiar with that? So it's, you're doing some renovations?
No renovations.
You're not doing any renovations?
I can speak to that a little bit, just to clarify. So the, the use is allowed by right, it's retail sale of baked goods and the tea. And then there are this, when Kakada actually bought the business, the seats were already there.
Yes.
They were illegal and we were trying to get the person at the prior bakery to legalize them with us. And so then Kakada kind of came into this situation.
Oh, poor thing.
So he did do some renovations, but he's open and I think the town was just thinking, you know, you just kind of found yourself in this situation, let's legalize these seats. Because he really did need the special permit for that and for the parking waiver. But he's, he's open right now. So the renovations are done and he's got his permits.
Through the Health Department, right?
Through the Health Department and the Building Department and everything, so this is kind of like cleaning it up.
So we haven't, thank you for the clarification. So just to finish up, we have an email dated May 1 from Dave Roach, our building commissioner, he has no issues, but he, he does make clear for the record that this does not grant outdoor dining. We have nothing, Alex, from the police or fire on this. Alex, I think you cleared up the questions that I had. Paul, do you have any comments or questions?
Nope, I'm all set.
Jean, do you have any comments or questions? Natasha, do you have any comments?
I have one question, so, so you have a certificate of occupancy and everything?
We did, we did.
Okay, so one question is, I just see, just because as you're looking from outside, as you're, there's the door to the bathroom.
Yeah.
Do you have a closer on that door? Just because like, if people leave it open, you'd be able to see right in. But that's my only thing, is like from the outside, you know, it's, it's a parallel to the last door and there's no counter in front of it, so is, if, I'm just asking.
When I've been in there, and I go in there every week, the door is always closed.
Yeah.
But if, if there isn't a closer, could we add a closer just because otherwise it could stay open at times and what you see would be a bathroom as you're going by? Is that?
Is that something that we've?
I mean, never added anything like that to the decision, I think, you know, Kakada.
I mean, if, if you have a certificate of occupancy and they thought it was fine, it was just like, I'm just concerned that, that if you don't have a closer and someone just leaves it open, you would just basically see a bathroom as you're walking down the street.
The thing is, like, when you just let go, they will swing back.
So then you do have a closer, okay, that was my question, it's just, okay.
Hello, sir. Come to you in a moment. Artie, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I just thought it's yummy, it's yummy.
So with that, I don't see we have any comments or hands up from the public. Anyone on Zoom, there's no one in the room that wants to speak to, to this. Can I have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
A second by Artie, Natasha with a motion, any discussion? Hearing now will come to the vote, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We unanimously decided to close the hearing. So Alex will be in touch, we'll prepare a decision in a couple of weeks. And then you'll be good to go.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll have to vote the decision and review it, but it's generally a formality, okay?
Probably June 6?
Probably June 6. I have to check the agenda for that night, it's becoming eventual.
This will probably be a smooth decision. But we're not holding him up because he's.
Time intended, time intended.
Smooth, smoothie. A smoothie. Smooth, smoothie. Oh, a smoothie disaster.
That would be for green leaf then.
No, 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 they do.
You do smoothies?
Do smoothies.
Oh, there you go.
So that's why I went for the whole. But thank you very much. Do you have any questions for us? Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate your hard work. You're a great addition to the town.
Thank you.
Before we come to the next item on our agenda, is your name, Mr. Sachi?
Yeah.
So were you here for the item on the agenda relating to CR Naturals?
Yeah.
So they've come and gone.
Okay.
So was there something that you wanted to speak?
The only thing I was gonna say was that.
What I'm gonna ask you to do is come to the table and then we'll ask you to say your name and your business address. Where, oh.
We close the hearing.
Yeah, what? We close the hearing, actually, so we can't take any more testimony.
That's fine.
I apologize.
That's okay.
Jean, you're absolutely right.
But Mr., your comments were reflected in the letter from the attorney and the, and it was a letter from the applicant mentioning their discussion with you and you.
And your reservations.
Did have some concerns and that was mentioned at the hearing.
Yes, that's right.
Very openly.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think that whatever testimony I have would have made any difference at all. But I always feel like it's my obligation to add my input, especially where something is directly impacting me. So, you know, they had approached me several times about if I had any issue with with anything that's going on over there to ask, you know, for their help. And I never did. But just the other day, I was working. Somebody was smoking on my wall, one of the employees there. And I just walked up to him and said, if you want to do that, do it somewhere else. Don't do it over here. But, you know, I just, I keep thinking about this and that, you know, if somebody's at work and they're smoking and then going back to work. I know it's not the type of job where you can cut your. You're talking cigarettes. You're talking marijuana. Yes. Well, there's a condition in the permit that we issued back in October that says that they will police that and make sure that it doesn't happen. This has been going on since it opened. Okay, this has been the issue since it's opened. I don't care. If they want to smoke in their parking lot and I can't smell it, they can do whatever they want to do. But this was on my property now. Right.
I do have to say, Jean is right. We close the hearing.
Mr. Sachi, if you haven't seen this, I was gonna give it to him. It's in our packets.
Yes, that's right.
This is where I said that they, they mentioned all the concerns you had. And we mentioned those at the hearing because they were in the letter. Yeah.
That's fine, but it doesn't seem to impact, you know, your decision on anything. And that's what I don't understand. Like, no matter how many times people complain about this stuff going on, the decision's already been made, it seems. So. Except that, as I mentioned, we have a condition that says that they will make sure that people are not smoking marijuana. Yeah, but who's, who's in that condition? Well, if, if you complain, if people complain, number one, the police will do something if you complain to the police, because they will do some enforcement. But also, if you complain to our building commissioner, they're in violation of the special permit. And if they're in violation of the special permit, the building and the building commissioner has complaints about it, he will refer to us saying, we can pull their permit. We have the authority to pull their permit, in which case they can't operate. And so I'm saying, if there's a problem that they're violating their permit, you've got three options. Number one, they're offering to the neighbors to always go to a person who is the manager of a location and he, they claim that he's always there to hear your complaints. You can call the police. You can complain to the building commissioner.
And you can also send a letter.
And enough people complain, or even if there's one person complaining, we bring them in here and say, you're violating, you're violating your permit and you gotta do something about it.
You have to keep a log, the date and time and what your observation was. And then send that in writing to the building commissioner and copy planning, the planning department. And you can also, at the same time, call the police. And then, and then we'll have a record of the police record as well. And we'll have that as evidence to support whatever, you know, whatever claim you've made. And that'll be, and then, you know, that'll give the planning board the authority, like Paul was saying, to, you know, to discuss with them any kind of remedy. And if it doesn't, and if they can't remedy the problem, then we do have the authority ultimately.
Yeah, but why would you, why would you, I understand all that.
Yeah.
But, you know, when a guy is, is working, especially guys that work with their hands, you know, time is everything and, you know, you're trying to accomplish a job. Do you really think after working, you know, 10 hours, you know, 90 degree weather, you're gonna go home and write a letter to the, you know, you expect that the people that are in the authority to grant these permits, that are gonna look at the complaints of the abutters and do something about it. Well, that's the point. We don't, unless the abutters complain, we don't know. There was a whole line of them here when they went for that permit. That, that was in October and so we, and so we issued the condition that said that, you know, they will make sure that it doesn't happen. And they were here tonight and nobody was here.
That's why I was.
You weren't here at 7 o'clock, which was, which is when it was on our calendar. It was on the agenda for 7 o'clock. And if you were here at 7 o'clock, we would have been able to, to hear you raise this issue now.
I will, I will say that though, the whole reason why we held it temporary, this by appointment basis, which was the premises of the change that they wanted to begin with, in addition to increasing the number of sales stations, which they end up have not utilizing. But they did go to this change of no more appointment required. You can just go in as long as you've got a medical card. And that, and we get met, we required that to be conditional for a period of time to see if there were any complaints.
Right.
And during that time, and we left it open, and we were very clear to the public for exactly that reason. And we told people to let us know in addition to the police and in addition to, you know, to the landlord. So we've done everything that we could in a reasonable way. We, you know, we understand that, you know, you have a recent complaint. So you've, so minimum you can call the police. Every single time it happens, you can put it on speakerphone, you know, while, you know, and, you know, call the police and make a complaint. They'll have it. They'll have the date, the time, and they'll attend on the scene.
Well, that may be, you know, I, I understand your point. And I understand also that, you know, it's the law of the state and everything like that, but, you know, I don't, I don't think you guys know the consequences of it. It's not, you know, it doesn't end with me. You know, I, I talked to a lot of the police doing the details on the road. That's all you smell everywhere now. There's, there's tractor, tractor, tractor trailer drivers stopping over there getting it. And the impacts of this are gonna be seen in the future, believe me. It's not, it's not a good thing.
I understand.
That's the name, just the name, recreational marijuana. It's not recreation.
This is medical.
This is not recreational marijuana.
It's not recreational. It's not allowed in our town.
This is medicinal marijuana. They have to have, the customer has to have a prescription. You see the empty nip bottles and the empty Bud Light bottles after they go in and get them. You just, you don't, you don't, you guys don't see it, you know, because you're living a different end of town. We, you know, we see it and we see what's going on. It's just not, it's not a good thing. And, you know, if somebody, I was, I walked to work all during the winter because they put so much road salt in the road. I don't want to drive my cars in it. I know what salt does to cars, so I walk to work. You know, I walk up the hill, past the library, by the, by the train station. The tea employees puffing away at 8 o'clock in the morning. I'm like, you know, it just, it's a, because it's been legalized, it's, it's something that people have accepted as being like a normal thing. But, you know, if somebody was having a bottle of beer or a glass of wine at 8 a.m., you'd say that guy's an alcoholic. He needs help. But when somebody's smoking weed, it just, you kind of expect it. You know, you say, okay, I smoke weed first thing in the morning. Don't we have regulations about smoking weed in Puddle? I think we do. It's everywhere. If you guys haven't seen it.
That's a select board.
It's everywhere. I mean, it's no matter where you go, you know, I had, I had, I don't mean to take too much of your time.
I appreciate that. We've got to get on with our agenda.
But, you know, I had relatives coming from Europe and they said, you know, they smoke cigarettes. They said, you know, we see the smoking, no smoking signs everywhere, but everywhere we go, it always smells marijuana. So.
Thank you for coming.
Okay.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a de minimis change application by the town of Needham to replace the current MBTA bus shelter at the town common. With us today to discuss the de minimis change is attorney Chris Heap for the petitioner. I'll note for the record that we have received a letter dated April 27 from attorney Heap explaining the change and why such change is de minimis in nature, including related plan sets. At this point, I'll turn it over to attorney Heap. Let's go ahead.
Thank you very much and a good evening, everyone. As the chairman said, I'm Chris Heap and I represent the applicant tonight. And I'm here to talk about a bus shelter. Specifically, the bus shelter that was going to be installed in the new renovated town common. That your decision approving the new renovated town common was issued in, I believe, December of 2021. And although the bus stop that was going to be installed, well, I don't believe, to my memory, was discussed in any great detail during that public hearing. That the detail for that bus stop was shown on the plan set that was submitted to you and captured in the written decision that you guys issued in December 2021. That written decision noted, specifically noted, that the existing bus stop on Chapel Street was gonna be replaced with a new one in the same location and that the detail for that new bus shelter was shown in the plan set. The plan set was later modified in November 2022 and that didn't show any bus shelter at all. But I don't think that matters for our current purposes. So we're here tonight because as the project has proceeded, the applicant has given some additional thought to the bus shelter that was shown on the plan set in December 2021, which, if you have the papers in front of you, is duplicated in, on page two of the letter that I submitted, the detail for that shelter. That bus shelter, after further consideration, we just concluded that it was not ideally suited for New England weather conditions. That bus shelter is, consists of three posts and a roof and it has no walls.
And that's not what's there now. That was to be the new one.
That's an interesting distinction. So there's the existing bus shelter that's there now. There is the proposed bus shelter that was shown on the approved plan set. And now there is the new third version that, of those three.
MBTA compliant.
Which is the one we're proposing, which is the preferred MBTA conventional model new bus shelter.
Different from what's there now.
Different, yes. Aesthetically similar.
I thought so. When I looked at it, I said, oh, this must be what they're coming in for the permit for, but not quite.
It is not the same. It is, it is slightly different. The new bus shelter that we're proposing to substitute for the one that was proposed a while back has an aluminum roof, three eighths of an inch tempered glass walls, a bench for seating and some, some lighting. It is the, the town manager's office has been talking to the MBTA. The one we're showing now is their preferred model that they're hoping towns will install. And they will actually maintain it going forward. There's actually, once the bus shelter is purchased, there is a, there is a, as part of that purchase, there is a contract with a private company that will maintain it for the first five years, after which the MBTA assumes responsibility for maintenance for the shelter going forward. And we've also been speaking with the state and we have, I believe, an earmark to fund the, the purchase of the bus shelter, which is also, I think, important. So, but really what it boils down to is that the, the shelter that was shown on the previously approved plans and duplicated on page two of the letter that I submitted to you in April really is not adequately protective of anybody who's waiting for a bus. It would have looked great, it would have probably looked great here, but it wouldn't have, it wouldn't have served its intended purpose, which is what we're trying to do now. So we've come back to you with a substitute shelter, again, the one that the MBTA is encouraging towns to install and one that we think is gonna be far more practical, functional and useful to people who are waiting for a bus.
Thank you. Any comments or questions, Artie? Natasha? Jean?
When it comes to the decision, I have some comments on the decision, but not in general on what's proposed.
Paul?
I'm all set.
All right. So can I have a motion to deem the town's proposed change of the MBTA, new MBTA bus shelter as a minor modification?
So moved.
And to grant the requested modification. We have a motion by Paul. Do I have a second?
My second. Paul's motion was to, the change is deemed minor in nature.
Correct.
Yes, and to grant the relief.
No, that's gonna be a separate motion.
Okay.
First, first, we have to deem it a minor modification before we can grant the relief.
We usually separate the measures.
That's right.
I second that motion.
Okay. Any discussion on the first motion? Hearing now will come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous decision by the board.
Now I move that we grant the relief requested.
Can I have a second?
My second.
Any discussion? Hearing now will come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's the whole board. We unanimously decided to grant the requested relief. Now, as to the decision itself, Jean and Paul, I understand you have some suggested edits or questions.
Do you want to go first?
Well, yes. Okay, thank you. Yes, there's a reference to the approval from Design Review Board. It says D A R D. That's exact. But do we have an approval? I didn't see it in the packet. We don't have it. So will we simply delete?
Has it gone to the Design Review?
It is not going to the Design Review.
Let's just take it out.
Yeah, let's just take it out then. Okay. And then.
Oh, above that.
Right above that is a missing date. It says 202, it says 202 for the year. Is it 20?
23.
23? I assume it's 2023?
Well, that's in the future.
On May 23rd, it must be 2022.
Are you on page two?
It's Exhibit C, which I didn't happen to print out on page two. Does, what date does, yeah, couldn't be May 23rd because we're not there yet. Unless that's a mistake and it's marked or something.
Oh, my eyes.
What is the date on the plan?
It's 2022. Because I remember thinking, whoa, a year ago, okay.
It's May 23, 2022.
Right.
Okay. So I had, did you have something else?
On the next page, paragraph two, second line, would not, has to be inserted between would and appropriately. The petitioner concluded that the originally approved shelter would not appropriately serve its users.
Right.
And lastly, at the end of that paragraph, you've got a comma instead of a period. That's all I caught. Between Jean and I, we got it all.
Can I have a motion to approve the decision as drafted and modified tonight?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing now, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. There is no negative vote. We unanimously decided. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Very good. So the next item on our agenda is the decision for Cook. Does anyone have any comments on this decision? I don't.
On page two, findings and conclusions. Jean, I'm gonna look to you to see what you think. In the first paragraph, the findings and conclusions made in the major project site plan special permit, it says, were ratified and confirmed except as follows. Shouldn't that be are ratified and confirmed? Shouldn't that be present tense?
Made in. Yeah, because this is the very decision that we're ratifying and confirming.
Right. So change the word were to are there.
Ratifying.
It's on page two. The full paragraph under findings and conclusions, last line, it says December 19, 2022. It says we're ratified. We're changing that to are ratified. In paragraph 1.6, after the date, on the third line, after date, April 12, 2023, you have a period. after the date, on the third line after date, April 12, 2023, you have a period that doesn't belong there.
Sorry, I'm doing something for Mark and I have to stop following along.
Okay.
What is that?
1.6.
1.6.
There's a, oh, in the second paragraph of 1.6.
There we go.
There's a.
Comma, 2023.
Oh, she showed he took out the period in the way you've got.
No, there's a period, there's both a period and.
A comma, right.
So the period goes, it should be a comma.
Is there something between are ratified and not that I missed that I was talking about?
No. And that's all I've got.
And I have a question, just a question about the conditions in the decision. I know the long email from Tara Gersh of April 25th. And especially the very last paragraph is in bold. Once Cook Restaurant is approved to expand their outdoor seating areas, we ask that copies of the area to be submitted to the public health division on an ongoing basis. Is it expected that that condition would be required by the select board when they approve the outdoor dining? Or is it something, that's something we should be doing something about in our decision?
Well, our decision says that they have to comply with everything the public health.
Okay.
Public health department goes.
We ask that. I just wasn't sure where it says we ask that, whether that is something that isn't necessarily a rule or requirement, but just something they would like.
We're just doing the parking waiver here, if you remember, like they will have to go to the select board for outdoor dining.
Yeah.
So we shouldn't be putting any conditions like that. And what Paul said. So between the two of them, I think.
All right.
I have a quick question. On 1.6, the second paragraph, I have a second paragraph. It just starts saying to now say, lowercase t. Where is that coming from? I don't want to see where that's coming from.
Well, the previous, the petition was to revise the decision, which previously stated to now say. So you just have a space, so it looks.
But is it, but it's going to be part of the first, first paragraph?
Any changes, revisions or modifications, other than changes deemed minor movement to the plan should be required by the board to now say.
Well, then that means after the word board, should be a comma, close quotes, then the paragraphs should be merged together?
Yes.
Well, there's not a comma after board, so I wouldn't put quotes there, but I could.
No, I would.
Well, I would, I would miss what the quotes shouldn't be there.
I think. Yeah.
I would take out the period and put the comma after the quote.
Okay, that I can get behind. And do you want me to, so do the set, do the same thing after the next one?
Are we merging, are we merging those two paragraphs together?
Yes.
The comma is supposed to be, technically, the comma belongs inside the quote. That's how, that's a, that's a proper formatting.
I know.
You and I can argue that outside of here because I've read an interesting grammar book. It says that the British, the British way of doing it is to put the comma outside. I'm sorry, Paul, we're not Britten.
We revolted against the British.
Yeah, come on, Paul.
Says the Canadian.
Artie, this is one thing. I was, I was agreeing with you when, in the early one, I said, gee, the comma comes after the.
Yeah, no, the comma is inside, the comma is inside the quote.
Because in the original, in the original, there's no comma.
That's why the comma has to go afterwards in this case.
Oh, because it was like that before.
I separated it because for me it was just easier to see it that way. But I don't, dramatically, it might not be right to have these in two paragraphs. So one paragraph or two.
It's one paragraph.
One paragraph.
I'll do the both.
Say in, in bold.
In both cases.
That's good, Paul.
It also comes up in, in paragraph 1.7.
Yeah, I got it. I did it both.
Anything else? Are we good on this decision now? Can I have a motion to approve the decision?
Well, just make sure.
Right.
So on, on, on 1.7.
She got it.
Yeah, but we're moving it as one paragraph, but the period doesn't belong there after the word A R D.
No, the period doesn't belong and, and a comma goes out after the quote.
You sure it's not inside the quote, Paul?
If, in the original, there's no comma inside the quote.
Oh, come on, Paul, give me a hard time.
So now, can I have a motion to approve the requested relief?
So moved.
Well, we usually go right.
You have to go through and like itemize.
Yeah, I have this.
That's outlined on page four.
So this comes up, so for Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair. And then also, Artie, we tried, just.
Yeah, we need to be specifics.
So when we do a motion to grant the relief, you know, whoever makes the motion will say, I move, you know, to grant an amendment to major, etc. And they read, they start from there.
We're.
They do one and two, and if there's three or four, sometimes this paragraph is like a page long. And they read it starting with, I move to amend. That's where it starts.
Just the decision.
Yeah. Will we go for it?
Yeah. So I moved to grant an amendment. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
To a major site plan review, special permit number 91-1, dated June 11th of 1991, transferred on March 11th of 1997, amended on December 13, 2005, transferred on June 13, 2017, and December 19 of 2022, under section 7.4 of the Needham zoning bylaw and special permit 91-1, section 4.2, and number two, a special permit under section 5.1.1.6 of the bylaw to waive strict adherence with the requirements of section 5.1.2 required parking, subject to and with the benefit of the following plan modifications, conditions and limitations.
So. So first out of the gate, that was impressive. Well done. Very good.
You can be.
But now you understand the, you know, the, the contract. I'd say like the first few times I did it.
Well, I hear them say it sometimes, but I'm not sure when it's needed and when it's not, and it's for decisions, basically.
Yes.
Okay.
So. So there you go. So we have a motion by Natasha, a second by Artie. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I heard everyone on that, so there is no negative vote. We've unanimously decided to grant the relief. Now, with respect to the decision, can I have a motion to approve the decision as drafted in our packets and then further revised tonight?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed by nay. There is no nay. We've unanimously decided to grant the decision for Cook. Now comes our decision on the agenda for Wingate regarding their request to allow a third floor and then an additional 22 units for a total of 72 units, 12 and a half percent of which are nine units, so they'll be affordable units. Coming to the table is attorney Evan Tuber and also David, what's the last name? David Feldman from, from Wingate. Before I turn to you folks, I will say that, Paul, one of the things we had, we talked about at our last, at our last session was the question, Artie wanted to impose a condition requiring solar panels. And then there was discussion by the board on that, and Wingate said they were not going to do that. Then there was discussion about making the requirement to make the building solar ready, which, which the applicant effectively agreed to do, to be, to agree to go to solar ready. But then you also asked Paul specifically to get, you know, to, to get an opinion from town council. I've already had a conversation with him and I want to report back. And this is, so this is important. It's going to come up in our training. But we don't have a mechanism, Artie. Because I know I say this to you because you brought this up on several occasions. None of us disagree with the public goal of what you're trying to accomplish. But there's no, we don't have anything in our bylaw that enables the, or the state statute that enables the planning board to make a requirement. So it's really a scenario where if a, if a developer or if an applicant, a petitioner, does not affirmatively volunteer for it, when we're telling them to do it, we don't have the authority to tell them to do it. They've agreed to do it here. Other developers have agreed to do it when we pushed them into it. But that doesn't make it right and we're going to stop that practice. The way to do it properly, which I'm looking to do as part of the board's change for climate action zoning, is to look into allowing this.
Wait, 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 wait. Did Christine say that we need to stop doing this even if the developer is willing to do it?
No, no, so, so. So.
We're talking about the percentage of the 14 units.
No.
Talking about the requirement to have a solar ready status or solar damage. So ideally, we would have it either affirmatively declared on a byright and or by special permit condition as part of the criteria.
We'd have to amend our bylaw.
For, correct, for, which is one of the climate action goals that I would like to see the board take action on if it chooses to. You know, to include it as criteria for site plan review and also for other special permit. Now, in a scenario where a petitioner has agreed, like the solution here, because they've agreed to do it, although by our assistance, that is different. We have a condition in our bylaw now on page nine.
In, in, in the decision.
In the decision. That says, that says that the, you know, we make a condition for the petitioner to be solar ready. Couple of problems. One, we don't actually have a term for what solar ready, there's no definition of what solar ready is. We loosely talk about wiring it for solar ready, but there's no definition in our bylaw or in the special permit. But setting that aside, the only way it's a permissible condition, having previously agreed to it, is to add a finding in our decision. So we'd have one more finding, Alex. That, and the finding would say during the hearing, the petitioner agreed to wire the building to be, quote, solar ready.
That would be at the end of the big decision, finding one.
There is one extremely important thing and hopefully, hopefully you'll understand and agree to this and maybe you already do in this, anyway, that is wiring, some aspect of knowing even what's wiring is supposed to be. The most, the most critical thing here is actually having it be structurally sound for solar. That, that is by far the most critical thing. Having structurally sound and having a chaser conduit.
Yeah.
That is by far the most critical thing.
So it's not just, it's not just the wiring, it is the roof.
Yeah.
Structure.
Because.
Structure, being able to accommodate.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, it has to be, has to be, go through the structural analysis.
Yeah, yeah, we'll make sure our structural.
That's, that's the most important.
Well, I'll make sure a structural engineer includes that voting.
Yeah, so that, that has to be in the decision.
You're okay with having that?
Yeah.
So that means there's be rewording 3.9, just say something more, just say more than.
Yes, yes, yes.
Say the building shall be.
The roof shall be.
But I think, I think the point that Adam is making is that there needs to be a finding that says that the applicant agrees to this.
Yes.
It can only be a condition if the applicant agrees.
I understand.
Like, but that like is.
4.9 will be tracked in the findings.
But there's, there's two pieces to it. The existing building has a structural system that just has to be reviewed to see if it would hold it.
So we're, we're actually adding the third.
But there's the third floor.
So the third floor roof will be.
Right, so the third floor would be able to accommodate it because it's new construction.
Right.
Right.
Are we able to give Alex the instruction she needs to do the rewording? So that we can approve the decision.
Building shall be electrically wired.
Okay, wait, are we doing the?
Let's do the finding first.
Well, it'll track. It'll track the same thing. It'll do the same language.
Right.
So I'm reading it through 3.9.
So we.
Then Alex will copy paste it over to a finding that says the, the petitioner has agreed to.
Right.
So the building shall be electrically wired.
We already have this.
I know, I'm reading, I'm reading it so that Alex can get it. The building shall be electrically wired and the roof shall be made structurally sound so that the roof is considered solar ready. And so, and I put the word in front of so. And so that photovoltaic panels can be added in the future if desired.
There is a very specific thing here because we're talking.
Finding that says the petitioner has, has agreed to.
That the building shall be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Has, has, has agreed that. I mean, just copy paste it. What'd you go to 3.9?
But going forward, if it's not, if the applicant doesn't volunteer to do it, you can't push them into it.
Until we get in our bylaw.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
So we think.
But on the other hand, well, we have kind of pushed developers into agreeing to do things that we want them to do.
Yeah, I mean, we pushed them with the various things a little bit here and there, depending on what they're looking.
Guys, it's, 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 we don't have the legal authority to push them into anything.
No, but we.
We can ask, we can ask, we can ask.
We're, we're. Okay, this is a site plan special permit, but this is different.
Correct.
Than a use special permit. If it's a use special permit, we have more authority to kind of be more assertive in asking the petitioner to do something that's not necessarily in the bylaw. Site plan special permit, we really don't have as much oomph to do it. But if we mention it, if we ask them if they're willing to do it and they say yes,
then they're willing to do it, they're willing to do it.
It's one thing to ask them. It's another thing if they're kind of pushed into it.
Well.
Well, and again, that.
Little hard nut.
The forcefulness of our asking, I'm not going to say that we're pushing them, but forcefulness of our asking depends upon whether it's a use of special permit or.
This stuff is going to come out on part of a train.
There are two parts to our decision and one of them is worded as if it's a use special permit. The request, special permit for a serial number.
Why would I get into that?
Yeah.
Because this reads like, this reads like a full special permit and I was wondering.
I think the application.
Evan, you, I assume you have read the decision. I'll ask you, have you read the decision?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, I, I'd read this and I thought, this is a reading like an amendment to a special permit that already exists. And I was wondering whether this really is the proper format. And I know that you want to get it done because I'm sure you want it started working.
Oh, yeah.
Have you, so, so we issued, we issued a special permit to allow for renovation of the first, the first floor.
I think all you're, all you're pointing out is that there's a lot of redundancy in this.
Correct.
But, and I.
So you're okay with that?
Yeah, because I didn't want to delay this process by another month or so and I didn't want to get back to Alex and say, Alex, you know what? How do we write this whole thing a different way? The issue in our minds.
How do you make any money?
He makes plenty. We vote Evans. That's not my goal.
Well, so we came to help you.
All right. So, but joking aside, you know, really our goal is to get this process completed. And so I sort of, I, I, I took this as, you know, Alex is now pulling the labor in or on getting these things written. Lee's not available, I think. So I didn't want to sort of come back to Alex and say, don't do it this way, do it another way. I, I really didn't think that was going to be too much.
Okay.
All right. All right, so. Uh, Gene?
Yes. I, I know that as Paul noted, that the application is referred to in the first place is for an amendment to project site plan special permit. And yet the decision simply says, vote to grant a special permit, so there's two things. One, on the, on the grant, the special permit. Uh, I do think it should reference an amendment. Um, as five four, um, but also it says substance, but getting to the substance. The requested special permit for fifty independent living units, but isn't it seventy two?
Where are you reading?
Excuse me?
Where are you reading from?
I'm reading page seven. On, uh, uh, what it said therefore. The board voted to grant. And this is what.
Yes.
Relief is with granting.
Yeah, well, I caught that too, it shouldn't be seventy.
It should be seventy two.
Yeah. You are right.
Yeah. So, um, I, I. That we use wording that says that we vote to grant. Um, an amendment to major projects, I could give you a special permit. And recite all this stuff the same way we did, you know, that Natasha read in the last. A special permit amendment. And. Wouldn't we do that? Don't we usually have a paragraph that I, in the conditions that I'm not finding here that says. All the conditions of the original special permit apply.
That's right.
Yeah, and I, I don't see any such. Uh, condition.
I thought that was in here.
Uh, yeah, well, maybe it is, and I missed it.
Yeah, under conditions and limitations. On the bottom of page seven. Let's, let's take a look at that. The plan modifications, conditions, limitations contained in major project site plan special permit number ninety three dash three.
Are ratified and considered. Thank you.
I think the word decision and the now therefore line. That doesn't belong there.
So just start with five?
We just.
Conditions and limitations, yes.
Oh.
Well, that's what article three is, article three is our conditions and limitations.
Yes.
Okay, so.
They had a decision, and then it says now therefore by amendment. That doesn't belong there.
Yeah.
We've never had.
But also, Gene, in. Section three point one. Also references back to the prior decision.
Yes, I, I had my list up before, of course, because it goes from one page to the other, and I didn't read it carefully enough, thank you. Okay, so, but, um. Is it clear to you? And maybe we'll go through the recitation as we usually do in our motions. Um, but what we're talking about doing after therefore on page seven is to. Use the words that are on paragraph two of page one. Yeah. Okay. So, is there anybody else who wants to say anything further?
We, we would like to be heard on.
Oh.
Before we get to anyone else?
Well, I've got some, some things. Because we're dealing with. Something written like a special permit, even though it's not an amendment. On the bottom of page one. Yeah, the hearing was called to order by the chairperson, Paul S. Alford. Tuesday, March seventh, twenty twenty two. And. Then it says, and then it says that it was continued. April twenty five, twenty twenty three.
The twenty twenty two is a typo.
So that should be twenty twenty three?
Yes.
Was I chair then, or was that me? Well, that should be Adam.
Yes.
God, okay.
It's working too fast.
So then we've got two letters from Evans Huber dated February third, I, I just questioned whether that was. But I was going by, you know, March seventh, twenty twenty two. That confused me. Now. Um, on page four. Melissa Divis. You've got nine, ten, ten. Twelve, thirteen, I don't know if that's supposed to be ten, eleven, or it's just supposed to be ten.
Yeah.
Ten and eleven is a letter from Evans Huber dated April five, twenty twenty three. Probably should just be ten.
Oh, if it's just a trend, I'll check it, I'll check it. I'll highlight it and check it.
Yeah.
Because the letter from attorney Evans Huber is substantive.
Uh, this is a Fed TV. One point seven, you said per section.
Yes, I said this means second.
All right, so we've also got on the now therefore, I've got it. I've got it worded in the granting of relief. Grant the requested. Amendment to the special permit for seventy two independent living units. That's how, that's how I'm suggesting.
I, again, I think that's fine.
Okay. Any else, Paul? Section three point five, we're going to have a condition. That they have at least eighty one paid parking spaces. I thought that you didn't need eighty one parking spaces.
About that too, do we want to actually require that?
Yeah. Want that to be a condition or? I mean, that, that doesn't.
Yeah.
I know that's what they're. They're intending to have that, but it's not.
How did you arrive at that, Alex?
I think that's what you. Have.
I, I, I think what. Is whether it should be required that they do that number, if you're asking, how did we get to that number? It was, there was ninety eight spaces there, taking seventeen away to take. Twenty degrees space, so that leaves eighty one. Again.
It's a policy question, so is it at least, or is it really?
Although that's a good question, the analysis is saying we have enough parking spaces, don't worry. Is, I think. This is that there will be eighty one, so don't worry. So, shouldn't we say that?
Well, I think, I think you brought up this question, whether or not, because the, the, the requirement of thirty nine. Was based on the, the other services. Uh, requirement of. Half a space per. Plus. Staff. And you were making the point that that's an unrealistically low number of spaces, and I, we responded by saying, yes, that is true, that is an unrealistically low number. But it's not an issue in this case because we actually have one space per unit plus.
Right.
Yeah, the conversation was kind of connected. We's connected on the traffic. Yeah, 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 the conversation was connected with traffic, and I'm talking about traffic. Paul made a very valid point about the traffic as far as how many good lives are even coming and going, but then there was a connection of. How many independent living, how many people are likely going to have parking spaces, then he made the reference, well, you definitely have enough parking spaces. And I think that was generally agreed upon.
Yeah. Really have an issue with.
Yeah, you have eighty ones enough.
But not to say at least. Not if I had to say. The petitioners shall have eighty one paid parking spaces.
Reason to say it, you can keep it to at least.
I don't think there's any substantive difference.
You're comfortable with having the eighty one.
And as I read. And as I read our finding one point five. Which is, those number of spaces on this, so will therefore be eighty one.
Three point one six, Alex highlighted diesel fuel.
Yeah.
So we have, so this is one of the issues that we wanted to raise.
Okay.
If you, um, in, and this is. You, you need to. In considering what I'm about to say, you need to look at three point one six, three point one seven, and three point three four C. The second part of three point one six. About halfway down the paragraph starts with the petitioner shall deliver to the board for its review and approval plans and specifications, et cetera, et cetera. Well, we've already done that. So what's in the, um, what's in the second half of three point one six? We've already done, that's, that, that material has been submitted to the board. Our basic position, our basic, our basic position on this is. That we don't have an issue with three point one seven, which basically says that we have prior to occupancy, we need to demonstrate. That this complies with all federal and state regulations. But what we don't want is what's in three point one six and three point three four C, which says. We have to get this approved before we can get a building.
Right.
That doesn't seem appropriate to us, so you can, in my view, strike out the second half of three point one six. And you can strike out three point three four C, and you are not jeopardizing the board's ability to make sure that. The noise, the, the generator complies with noise attenuation requirements prior to occupants. Because it's still in, that requirement is still in there in three point one seven.
Yeah. What if we change three point one six to say the petitioner has delivered to.
Because it's a finding, yeah.
Now, this is a condition.
Well, I mean, there has to be a condition when you're getting the building. Please, correct me, if you don't to the building permit. You have to meet the conditions. Of, of what, of, of the noise, the noise.
That's right.
You have to meet those in order to. Isn't that correct?
The occupancy. Yes, not the building.
Yeah, 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 the occupancy, so. You're building it for the specifications and specifications.
That's what three point one.
To get it, so you have to meet that before the occupancy.
If you look at three point one seven, that's what it says.
Three point one six was probably in the original special permit. At second. Second part of it.
But the same, the same issue is with three point three four sub paragraph C.
He's going to strike that.
Yes, we, we feel it's appropriate to strike that, and again. This, if you look at three point one seven, that's what the board still has. Which is appropriate, to make sure that the building's not occupied before this. Sound attenuation requirements are met.
And that is reiterated in three point three five E. Things that have to happen before the occupancy permit, so.
Right.
I feel mine with.
Right, so we can eliminate C entirely, three, three, four Cs with only.
And the second half of three point six. So we. In addition to a few typos, we have another substantive issue that we want to raise.
Yeah.
Is now the time to do that?
Yeah.
If you look at. Section. Or limitation. Um, four point five.
My, my, sorry.
Four point five.
The special permit shall not be transferred or assigned. By Wingate Development without the prior approval. Of the board after hearing and notice.
Right, and if you compare that to three point two one.
Three, two, one, so this special permit. Issue to Wingate Development LLC, so that.
Right. The, the, this issue has come up in, in other applications, three point two one. In my view, is appropriate, it's basically saying, you don't have the right to tell us that we can't transfer this. But we have to, whoever is the transferee has to demonstrate that they're aware of this and agree to be found by. Four point five looks like a kind of a holdover boilerplate.
It's a holdover.
Just take it right out, and so the next thing becomes four point five.
That makes perfect sense. You're kind of doing the same thing.
I have a lot of the second one, so.
One. grammatical correction, which appears on a couple places.
That Gene and I didn't batch.
Well, I don't know, you're British, so.
Touche.
Maybe that's why you didn't notice. Uh, on the first page, the third paragraph, where it says, no, last sentence, no other uses proposed to the site. I would, where is this? First page, third paragraph, last line. No other uses proposed to the site, I would think it should be no other uses proposed for the site or at the site. But not to this.
No other use.
Is proposed for, for the site.
And that, and that language appears again later in the decision. So.
You don't know where, all right.
I mean, I, I can find it if I. That, that same language is.
Because you didn't know that, right?
It was kind of right now.
And then.
One, one point three. One point three.
Got it, I got it.
Yep, that's, that's the other place. I don't know if you. Care about this, or if you think it's worth changing or not, but. Um, in a couple places, there's the list of the original special permit and then the various amendments. So an example of this is in one point two, but this same issue arises a couple other places in the decision. It lists the various decisions and, and amendments in chronological order. Um, and, and, and March fifteenth, twenty eleven, March fifteenth, twenty twenty two. And then insignificant, then says insignificant change on twenty, in, in twenty thirteen, and further amended in, in twenty thirteen.
I already have another to fix this.
Those are, those are out of chronicle. So it seemed to me that that should be.
I'm going to fix it, um, unilaterally.
Okay, and that appears in more than one.
Yeah, there's a lot, sorry about that.
So those are, those are our comments.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question, is there any diesel fuel generator? I, I wasn't sure.
Oh, yeah, I pointed out.
Yeah, you put it on, we didn't talk about it.
Yeah, it's a natural gas.
We just say generator?
That condition had it, but I don't know.
Yeah, unless it's a special control we're doing because of.
All right. Can I have a motion to approve the request of relief?
Um, oh. We're on page seven.
Yeah.
Okay, so I move. That we grant the requested amendment to, to special permit for seventy two independent living units in the elder services zoning district. Under section three point twelve point four of the zoning bylaw. And I move that we grant a special permit for major project site plan review amendment under section seven point four of the zoning bylaw. Subject to the plan modifications, conditions and limitations set forth in this.
Can I have a second? Any discussion?
Yes, um, just the wording Paul gave imply that we will add. The dates of the amendments, uh, you said the requested amendment to special permit. Will it be worded? Amendment. With all the dates and everything that's in the second paragraph of the first page.
Okay. All right. As amended. My motion has just been amended by Gene. Which I support the amendment, I second. The motion to amend.
So we have to vote on the amendment, and then we vote on the motion.
All in favor of the revised motion? All right, Alex, are you clear on the motion?
Yeah, but Donna's the one who's going.
So let's start over with a new motion. Let's start over with a new motion.
Oh, you want me to start over, oh, so I have to read all those?
Just because.
Where am I reading from, Gene?
Uh, you're reading, you know, the requested, um, second paragraph. Uh, requested, uh, amendment to major project site plan review special permit.
Starting in nineteen, nineteen ninety three dash oh three.
Yeah.
Okay, so I move. Swaps the first motion. I move that we grant requested amendment to. To, um. To major project special permit number nineteen ninety three dash oh three. In July twenty seven, nineteen ninety three. As amended on August nine nineteen ninety four, August eight nineteen ninety five, November twenty one nineteen ninety five, June third nineteen ninety seven, March fifteen twenty eleven and March fifteen twenty twenty two. And is further changed by insignificant changes ruled on April eighteen twenty thirteen and December seventeen twenty thirteen. And I further move that we grant a special permit for major projects, like clearing the amendment under section seven point four of zoning by law. Subject to the plan modifications, conditions and limitations set forth.
Can I, can I have a second?
Second.
The motion by Paul is second by Jean, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed by nay, uh, the ayes have it, the motion carries.
I now move that we approve the decision as presented and with the modifications.
Can I have a second?
Second.
The second by Natasha, motion by Paul and the discussion. I will say that um, motion to grant the relief uh, was a bit more complicated than the previous one. One of the things I'd like to do going forward is to kind of build up a bit of like a manual from the board. The proper procedures and how to make motions and I'd like to make a distinction between the previous note, between the previous decision approval and the motion that Paul just made. Uh, so we can come back to that and include that as in our like training manual. Um, uh, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, uh, all opposed by nay, uh, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the surety agreement. Thank you both very much. Is the surety agreement under the scenic road act and the public shade tree act relating to nine twenty South Street. I believe, excuse me, the petitioner, uh, Brian is, um, uh, Brian Canon is here on Zoom and I believe his attorney, George Jeter Junior is here by Zoom. Are we able to bring them over?
And then. Boarding in progress.
George, good to see you.
Good to see you as well.
Uh, we can't really hear George. George, can you say?
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, but but it's low and.
You say hello again?
Try, try it now, how's that? Is that any better or is that the same? Now, now I can't hear you.
George.
Yeah, I can hear you, Brian.
Yeah, I can hear you too. I see a little mute on their screen though. They have like a little muted.
Oh, yeah, yeah. How, how do I sound to you?
You sound fine. I can hear you fine.
Oh, this is not having a little red alert. Can you hear us?
Now I can. You guys are.
We still can't hear you, but we're.
Can you hear me?
Thanks for your patience.
Planning board is on a brief recess while we convene momentarily. Jean, watch your head.
This is the.
Oh, this should work. George?
Yes.
For those at home, we're on a brief recess. Please stand by, we the, we appreciate your patience during the technical uh, staff who that we seem to have resolved. Thanks to the good work of Alex and Anita Channel.
And I'm sure you're aware of it for a while there on uh, one of the discussions you all went, went dark.
No.
Really?
Oh, and even channels aware. Alright.
We could still see everything you were doing, George.
I thought that's what ceiling cat was for.
I, I don't see a doctor's. I'll give you something you can go up there and find.
Someday I'll be as old as Jean.
Hope you're in such good shape.
You go hiking in the in the Rocky Mountains.
Jean goes dancing.
Why not?
We cannot get that, we can get a rental, a rental. Oh, it was, she, she got ghosted us. Well, rented at least for eight years. We loved the place. Um, no, we never got a response. We also didn't get tickets to the Charlie ride bluegrass festival. It's like the was that famous singer that's in the news all the time? Taylor Swift is like a Taylor Swift phenomenon. Steve was there at the dot of when you're supposed to ask tickets. We've always gotten tickets from years past, no tickets. So we're just not gonna go, we're gonna look for fun things to do.
Maybe, maybe something happened to the person Jean that we rent the place from. Maybe something happened to him.
I asked the neighbors and they hadn't heard of any problems, so. She's just, I don't know.
Alright. We're back for those at home. Uh, thank you for your patience while we dealt with some technical challenges that are now solved. Uh, the next item on our agenda uh, is the surety agreement under the scenic road act and the public shade tree act relating to the property located at nine twenty South Street with uh, uh, Brian Canon as the petitioner. The uh, agreement is in our packet uh, and has been reviewed by attorney Jenta who provided comments to Lee. So we have by email today, a slightly modified version. Uh, so George, before I come to you, I'm gonna go to down the line with the board. Artie, do you have any comments?
Uh, no, I don't have anything.
Jean, uh, sorry, Natasha, do you have any comments? Jean, do you have any comments?
Uh, uh, you, you mentioned the red line version, correct?
Yes.
Yes, and uh, I somehow didn't, hadn't focused on it earlier and uh, was just trying to just compare and remove over to so, yeah, okay. Okay, so uh, I've read it now and uh, the only comment I have is that it seems to me in the second whereas clause, the reference to a tree fund at the town of Media should be a tree fund of Do we have a tree fund?
It's not a specific tree fund, uh, that I, I don't actually know how Eddie runs it, but it's something that he run, but it's not the type of fund that we might have eventually.
But it is some kind of fund.
Yeah, but I, I really, I can't speak much to it. I don't.
I just wanted to change word act to of that takes care of the fact that.
Yeah, good. Paul, do you have any comments?
No, I'm fine with uh, um, the agreement we just changes.
George, do you have any other comments or Brian, do you have any other comments?
No, I, I have none. I mean, my, my comments were really just sort of cleaning it up, non substantive, so I was fine with the substance of it.
Could I have a motion to approve the agreement as included in our packets and as revised by attorney Jenta and the board this evening?
So.
Motion by Paul, second by Jean, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll like come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. As a unanimous vote. Um, anything else on this item?
I, I have a question. I found in the materials and I'm not sure if this was sent this time or I just happened to have it in my planning board file, a letter asking that um, the, the, it'd be the road, the new road be called River Run Road. Did, did we somehow uh, deal with that just by showing that name on a plan or something or George? Judge, is there something we need to, to do about this still?
So, so there hasn't been any action yet taken on that request, but in my experience, uh, typically the naming really occurs when we do the subdivision documents, you know, the easements, the covenant. Uh, and and uh, you know, all that kind of stuff and a- and any plan revisions. And when we do that final packet, which would be the packet that ultimately gets recorded at the registry, that um, that, that is typically when we've dealt with the naming of the, of the road. Uh, sometimes, you know, some applicants will will start early in the process with the proposed name and we'll kind of carry that through. Uh, in this case, we didn't have that during the, the hearing stage, so I just wanted to kind of put that request in so it was in the record. So it didn't slip through the cracks, so to speak. But uh, to, to my knowledge, I'm, I, I don't think that there's an actual formal process and certainly nothing has, has uh, it has, it has not yet been addressed with respect to this subdivision.
And it doesn't need to be addressed tonight.
Not from my perspective, but certainly if the board wanted to, I, you know, that would be fine, but.
We're, it sounds like we'll deal with it in time. Best of luck with uh, you know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Very good. The next item on our agenda is uh, or do you have any comments?
We just touched a base something with the stone wall.
Uh, the next item on our agenda is the board of appeals case.
Ms. Chair, I'm gonna move to the outside of the table because I am recusing myself as an avatar.
Thank you very much. So we know for the record that Jean has recused herself as she isn't a butter.
We already dealt with this.
Yeah, I, I, I thought that too, but here it is again.
So the sole agenda on the May team agenda is an application for an expansion by Wellesley Family Care Medical Practice at one forty five Rosemary Street for uh, you know, request for parking waivers. And the question is, do we have any comment? I, uh, we have a motion to move no comment. Eddie, uh, we have a second by
Second.
Natasha, discussion, hearing now will come to the vote. All in favor of voting no comment, please signify by saying aye. By a vote of four to zero, no. No, no, no. Four to zero with Jean abstaining. We uh, have unanimously voted no comment. Um, we've already dealt with our minutes, uh, now a report from our um, from our uh, planning director and assistant director. Do you mean the report?
No, um, I would just have what I think you're going to report on.
Okay, so I.
Can I start something? You've got a lot of stuff to sign. Would it be interrupting if I have you start something?
It would, but if you want to go ahead, I don't have a pen with me, but uh, I'll maybe. Mine are just in the, I run a pencil. Alright, so while we're dealing with this. Let's see if I can pull up my papers. So as I think, I can't remember if we mentioned this to the board or not, but um, Jean and I had a chair of vice chair meeting, I think we did mention this uh, fairly recently with the select board with Kevin and with uh, and with Mary Ann and also with um, Katie and Kate. And I the um, do you need a pen? And we're getting organized, uh, to move, uh, to move forward with setting up. And so the plan is gonna be to set up a committee of about nine members. And I, the, the, the plan is to have two members from the planning board, which will determine at a future date, and two members from the select board. In addition to a member from the finance committee. And uh, the planning board would appoint an architect or a real estate developer. And uh, the select board would appoint a tenant and a community member at large. Uh, and I'm not sure if you guys were able to pay attention while you're signing on this. Do you guys get this so far?
No, not all of it, sorry.
I preach the truth.
We should stop signing.
Yeah, you know what, let's, let's deal with this after.
Since we're dealing with the signatures, yeah, may I say something to Alex? I want to sign this because I don't want to have to commit again. Um, but I feel that there were so many changes made that we deserve an opportunity to review the document to make sure we're satisfied with the changes.
No problem.
Okay, but I'll sign.
So wait, what? So why is Jean signing? Because there's the things that you guys already reviewed and voted. Just wants to make sure that I caught them all in the final.
Alright, so let's, we can continue. Uh, so I'll start over. The select board and the planning board had a joint chairs meeting. And I, and we're starting to give shape to the process going forward. It will, uh, we will jointly run a task force, which will include nine members. Be two members from the planning board, two members from the select board, there'll be a member from FinCom at five. Then the planning board will appoint two members and the select board will appoint two members. There are two appointments that the planning board will have. One is for uh, an architect. And then or a land use planner, and the other person that the planning board will um, uh, will appoint is. uh, will appoint is uh, is um, a developer, real estate developer.
I'm sorry, what's the purpose of this committee?
The MBTA community, right?
This is exactly, this committee is gonna be running the, running the ship for community engagement and to help prepare some of the zoning uh, for compliance with the MBTA.
Oh, so this has to do with MBTA?
So now, to that point, to that point, initially, I think that the housing plan had proposed uh, a May two thousand twenty-four, a year from now. But uh, but there's a DHCD review period that could take ninety days. And if it does, then it kind of, the, the schedule for May doesn't work.
So also, I make, um, the, the town um, sort with the town manager, assistant town manager Katie King, uh, very much want to have a robust community engagement process over several months. And the original schedule didn't provide enough time for that.
So now the plan is to do it, we only have one kick at the can in October of two thousand twenty-four. And uh, so this committee is gonna, you know, is uh, is gonna be uh, created in where Katie King is in the process of preparing the documents to formalize the creation of the committee. And then we'll review the documents, we'll have an opportunity to comment if we have any comments. And the, and the charge and the purpose of the committee. And then uh, and then we'll have an, then we'll have an opportunity for the board in particular, in the beginning of July, to appoint the two representatives from the planning board to the, you know, to this uh, ad hoc uh, committee.
And one with service culture.
Potentially, uh, yeah.
I mean, that's what this is. They keep this, one member of the planning board with service culture.
Right, and select board would be the culture. And this would, this would take us all the way uh, really through um, up until planning board resolve the final language. So uh, you know, in an effort to prepare and hold public hearings. But in addition to those public hearings, this ad hoc committee and regardless of who's on the select board and who from the planning board are on this ad hoc committee, we're still gonna play an important role in helping to shape, you know, the zoning and the public policy. And there will be substantial public engagement, like we learned from the detached ADUs. And uh, uh, so we expect we'll probably have uh, two or three sessions before it gets to the planning board for us to deal with the, the final language. So the public policy of the thing will be out into the community and we'll have an opportunity to participate in a meaningful way and shape.
And then, then even when it gets to us, we're gonna have, have our.
Of course, yeah.
You can also attend, everyone can attend the public meetings, I assume, so it's.
And that's exactly right. So, so let's say that you and Natasha were the planning board representatives, okay? You would, you know, report back like Natasha and Jean did during the housing committee. But in addition to that, we really need to upper level of engagement. So that.
With the community in general.
That's all, that's gonna be happening through this committee.
Yeah.
To, then as part of that process, when the representatives of, from the planning board are on that ad hoc committee and they're reporting back in, then it's up to the planning board to not just say, thanks for the update, have a bag of chips. That's when we also deal with the, the need of the public policy itself. And we would tell the representative, you know, we agree with this and this is why we disagree with this and this is why. And that representative would go back to the ad hoc committee and provide the planning board's comments. So that way, by the time it's come to the planning board, that public policy work to create the zoning has been included. Not just from us, but from the finance committee. And uh, and in addition to that, because of the potential impact that this will have, particularly on a by right basis, you know, the committee will also be working closely with other town boards and town departments. So we understand the impact over time on town services, including the schools and finance and so on.
And did you mention the consultant that the town intends to hire?
So the town intends to hire a consultant to help shepherd through the process. Uh, and that person would be hired, I think, ideally by the end of June, I think, is that right? I can't remember, I think it'll be.
Doesn't stay on the.
There was a separate email.
Yeah.
But you would be selecting it, that the two of you would be working with the, with the select board and the, and the town to select the consultant?
So, the, I think the select board will prob, I, I, actually, I don't know. To be honest, I think that uh.
I think the consultant particularly is to uh, to following the uh, guidelines of um, they have, the uh, DHCD guidelines, uh, go through the GIS process uh, to see if what is proposed as we go along, um, it, it meets those guidelines.
I think.
Yeah, my question was, who's selecting the consultant? Is it the, the same group that met to, to put this together?
You mean the ad hoc, I, I don't, that hasn't been resolved, that hasn't been resolved.
I thought it would be the town manager and Katie King.
Very likely that it would be.
Well, it was, you said that we already, we are, we are, we aren't even necessarily gonna be appointing our, have our selections in some of the.
So, uh, in our next meeting, which will be June, the June sixth or June sixteen?
June sixth is our next meeting.
So June sixth, so in the, in, in June, we're gonna finalize the remit. When I say we, the select board and the planning board for this ad hoc committee. Once that's been complete, then we'll vote as a board to determine who our representatives are. If we can do it all in June, that's great. Otherwise, it might be in our meeting in July, as it would be the case with the select board, that they would appoint at the same time.
Yeah, Katie, in a May fifteenth email, sets out a, a schedule and says, ideally both boards would point members at their July meeting.
Yeah.
And for us, that would be July eighteenth, and I put my, myself, why not June twentieth, you know?
If we can do it before.
Our, our July meeting is now not the eighteen.
It'd be eleven.
It's the eleven.
Oh, yes, excuse me. That'd be on my phone calendar, I gotta.
So uh, so more to come on that in our next, uh, in our next meeting. Uh, we'll have more information to report, we'll have more documentation that will be more formal and everyone can provide comment on it as soon as that's uh, available. Uh, so that's the report that I have, Alex, do you have any further report? Um, we uh, don't have any other correspondence in our uh, attachment, in our packet. So can I have the motion to adjourn?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'm done, so if we do that, could I at least, I would like to at least bring up, you know, what I had sent out and.
Oh, oh, oh.
I'll bring it up now, yeah, I mean, I would, I would like very much to find, by the way, to have, bring some work articles to the October town meeting, which really have to do with some, some um, points that have come out of the climate action related to, that would be the solar canopies, um, it's commercial solar, some other aspects, and I would, and if possible, if we can do anything about it through by law, although, although at this point, I'm still not sure if it's the planning board or the select would, I would like, it's like, I would like to do something, I would have, I'd like to have something meaningful for the October town meeting related to climate action.
So I, I agree, appreciate that. So uh, why don't we do this? Why don't? So as far as I'm concerned, as I recall, and correct me if I'm wrong, one of the reasons why I wanted to have uh, Stephen Frail here and he provided all the, the documents to us. It's now up to us.
Sure.
To determine which of those I, we can actually put into language. That's why when I had your note, I also pulled out, and you should look at this too, is we're gonna need to go into uh, you know, a public hearing though.
Oh, absolutely.
Over the summer.
Oh, absolutely.
A lot of people don't like that.
Oh, yeah, I know.
So, I, so if you can help me with that.
Well, I'll definitely help you with that, absolutely, let's make it happen.
Okay.
Yeah, let's make it.
Yeah, I haven't.
I don't know that we'll get a tree by law in October.
I agree, but it's likely since this is select order.
And, and there may, if we strike up another tree committee and so on, but.
I, I agree.
I do think that we can do solar canopies. And then we, there are some other climate action work that might take longer than.
Oh, there's definitely, there's definitely some, there's definitely some.
Like changing our, our site plan review criteria and our special permit criteria to allow for.
An application criteria.
With an application for what? For, about, for solar?
Oh, sorry, I'm just thinking that generally our applications can, can include some of the questions regarding.
Oh, for decent, for diversity, equity and inclusiveness?
And also just in general, right, for sustainability and just to ask, we can ask questions.
Sure.
Application process.
So that's.
Yeah, I think there are things that we can do, whether it be one of, some of our criteria for the special permits, something in there. We can, we could do, we have, we, we have to do something. It's, we have to do something.
I agree.
As, as much, as much as, is, is makes sense.
You had me at hello.
Oh, thank you, man. I love you too, baby.
I'm, I'm, I'm serious. So I talked to uh, Alex about this and she said that we mentioned this at her last meeting.
Oh.
But because we have it, I, we have, I, and Jean just put it in front of me, thank you very much, Jean. In case we did not deal with this at our last meeting, um, I apologize, already, I wasn't mocking you before, I meant that sincerely.
Oh, oh, oh.
I said you had me at.
Oh, I know you, I, I know you were.
We'll get together, we'll identify which of these items we can take swiftly on. And then we'll figure the task list and do the work.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I knew you were quite serious, no, absolutely.
Uh, we received a letter on May ten from uh, Reg Foster, who's the Chair of the Needham Housing Authority. Again, I apologize if we dealt with this at a previous meeting. Uh, ultimately, so the Needham Housing Authority was in front of us. I think on February twenty eighth with a proposal, at that time, they expected that they would go through a friendly forty B process. And they were also working on a number of, I, I think, at least one article in the uh, town meeting for additional funding. That article was ultimately uh, withdrawn by the petitioners. They're dealing with a funding urgency for October. And the funding urgency is a function of DHCD, as I understand it. DHCD would have to uh, approve their proposal that would allow them to go after certain pieces of additional construction financing. Particularly if I'm like the tax credit based programs that they utilize. Uh, if they don't get it in October, then the project would have to go through another year. And uh, and they would also need to have the zoning in place. So one of the things that they're looking for us to do is in the October town meeting this year, revise the zoning that would go from the one or two stories to uh, three stories and four stories on another building. And to go from about a hundred and fifty units to close to two hundred and fifty units. Uh, in an area that's a fairly narrow road that has the school and other homes near there. Uh, and so, was that, I think we, we did. So never, so just, so the final point is, I think we're probably gonna come in at our June sixth meeting and give us their, you know, their current proposal.
That's what I wanted to make sure, we, we had that they were coming on June sixth and I, as we discussed that.
So they are, so they're gonna come in at June sixth. And then uh, to discuss the current proposal and then we'll, we have to figure out, cause this.
Oh, that's not drafting the zoning change.
So Bob Smart is not, has not yet drafted the zoning by law change. I don't know if he will, there. And it's gonna deal with uses and it'll deal with dimensional regulations. Jean had a very good thought that we may not need to do it as an overlay, that we could do it under uh, apartment district A three under our main district itself. So there's a lot of configurations. I'm not sure that there's enough time between now.
There's still a lot of drafting because Jean's point was, we have an apartment A three and we really don't have anything drafted. And what the use requirements are, what dimensional requirements are. Uh, we're still, we're still drafting that, whether, whether we call it A three or call it an open A district. Or somebody's gonna draft that and the question about drafting it is basically, what does the housing authority need?
Well, that's, that was the, that was there, you don't know what the. That was what they were showing.
Genius.
Um, and it, it's still uncertain because right, right now in this few weeks, I'm trying, they're meeting with the Conservation Commission to know what setbacks from conservation land they are going to have to comply with. And that can change their plan. They have a conceptual plan, a number of units, a number of stories. They have to see if it works with the Metropolitan Commission.
Conservation Commission, right, all right. What's that?
Conservation Commission.
Oh, they are, they are, hey, it, it's, it's an important thing that a lot of people don't value as much as they should.
Is that what you sat on before already?
Say word again.
Did you serve before the Conservation Commission?
So I think they hope that by the time they meet with us on June sixth, they will not resolve, um, what the setback is to be that Conservation Commission. At least informally, without.
They're expecting leaders.
Drafted.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that we have enough time before October to get this done.
I, I would like to throw something out there, if, if, you know, whatever say we have as far as um, you know, we're gonna approve how many, how much can be there, certain, certain regulations and height. But it would be nice to have those units, so it would be nice to have those units fit into the architect, they fit into the area.
Yeah, well. We'll have.
It, it just sounds like there's a balance of, of opportunity for and, and time versus when the zoning is and getting the right appropriate things and having.
The second.
I would assume, um, community input that, that.
Exactly.
That would allow for, for the community to be involved as well, so.
They are, are reaching out to um, the, the neighbors, they're having neighborhood meetings, this.
I, I think that's what I would recommend, that, that, that they be as open and transparent with the community as possible. So that it sets it up where, when we start having the community meetings, everyone is aware. And that, that it becomes a better partnership with the community, you know?
We agree.
So I think that's where I would tell them, if, if they want this to go through, they, they need to do a huge community outreach before it comes to us.
That's right. Alex, there's a third page here that you need to sign. None of us signed it.
Yeah, we do three, that the, yes.
Okay. What's that for?
The state of growth.
Yeah.
Um, saying to pass this left. Yeah, the last, the last page.
You, you'd sign. Sign it too, but you probably didn't.
Uh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Will we adjourn?
A second.
Second.
Any discussion, hearing now, I'll come to the vote, all in favor, please signify by saying aye, aye. There's no uh, uh, may vote, we unanimously, we adjourned. Thank you all very much, good night.